Evening. It is 7:30, or 7:29, and all select people are here. I want to, I guess, start off by saying we offer, I offer apologies for starting at such a late hour. We are certainly supposed to start at seven, but we had incredibly important business to attend to, and I'm glad to report that we were successful in that endeavor. So, while we are a little bit late, it was for very good reason. If I could ask the all to rise in the room, and I'll ask selectmen snaglia to lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I also reflect on the fact that it is still September, and as such, it is Leukemia Awareness Month, and every member, including Jeff here tonight, is wearing an article of orange to observe leukemia awareness. It is clearly our hope, and I'm sure everyone's hope that's watching or listening, that someday we'll be able to celebrate the removal, or the elimination of leukemia in our society. But until then, let's keep the awareness going. So, thank you all for that.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate those comments. Unfortunately, I forgot my orange else in a rush to get here, so I appreciate this.
Mr. McCoy, I was giving you credit for orange on the yellow hue there, so.
Mr. McCoy, the gold color you're wearing is the official color for childhood cancer, and it also happens to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so you're right on the money.
You're a good man, thank you.
There you go. Good cover, Mr. Newhouse, thank you. We have transmitting of Treasury warrants, number 12, 12A, 13, and 13A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? We have one set of minutes from August 10th of 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Is there discussion on these minutes? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Our first appointment is at six, I'm sorry, is at seven o'clock with Paul Aluny, our town engineer, to discuss a status update on Kinder Morgan Pipeline Proposal. Mr. Aluny, thanks for coming tonight.
No problem, my pleasure. After speaking with the town manager, we felt that now is a good time to provide the board with an update as to where the Northeast Energy Direct project currently stands as proposed by Kinder Morgan. What I'd like to do is just go through where we've been for the last, where the project's been for the last couple of months, where it currently stands, and attempt to prognosticate where it's going to be over the next couple of months out to a year. Back in, I should start by saying that Kinder Morgan is still in their pre-filing stage for the project through FERC. Back in July, they did issue a revised pipeline location through Wilmington. They issued that to FERC, I'm sure you've all been aware of it. But what they've done is relocated the line to the existing overhead electric transmission line through town. What this did is it avoided impacts to the Zone 1 area for the Browns Crossing well field and the Salem Street gravel pack well field. It also avoided impacts to two vernal pools and our Article 97 conservation restricted land. I did go through parcel by parcel, just as I had done with the original location. I identified two, well, my two biggest concerns with the relocated line are, one, its proximity to the rock, active rock quarry, also known as the Benevento Company's quarry. And my concern is, I think, for obvious reasons, I think, common sense-wise, you want to separate those two facilities as far as you can be, but they've kind of inched closer to it. The maps that they have given us show, depict that they are approximately 235 feet from the gas pipeline, the proposed pipeline, to the edge of the rock quarry. My other concern is that, well, it's a mile and a half of the, or 7,000, some odd linear feet, is located within the Zone 2 groundwater protection district. It's not quite a sense of it as an area as the Zone 1 protective radius to the well fields, but it's still a protected area. It's the contributing watershed to these, to our aquifer for these two well fields. And not to mention, the rock quarry is located within the Zone 2 as well. So how these three things all, these three components come together, and what impacts they have to the wells, I think, needs to be evaluated. We've provided comments, both orally and written, to FERC expressing these concerns and asking for an independent evaluation that looks into how, to quantify these impacts to the wells. At this point in the pre-filing stage, I don't expect an answer in the next couple of months. I think that they'll likely wait until Kinder Morgan issues their, or formally files their application. We've also asked Kinder Morgan, and we've provided comments to Kinder Morgan as well, and we asked them to give us some case studies on where they've located or have existing pipeline infrastructure next to active rock quarries. They've given us two locations, but that's it. They haven't given us any data or any detail to draw a meaningful comparison from, for those rock quarries, whether or not, I don't even know if they're active or not, what the pipe section looks like, what the geological attributes are, what the pipe section looks like through this rock quarry, where shut offs are, I mean, the list goes on and on, what a proper or responsible evaluation would be to be comfortable with this situation. Presently, so that said, we really are in this kind of holding pattern, so to speak, where it's, they've prefilled, they've submitted their last draft resource report or map for the pre-filing stage, and we're kind of waiting for them to file their formal application with FERC. One current event that I want to discuss deals with, I think, a question that a lot of people have been asking since the onset, and that's whether or not there's actually a need for this project, and whether or not this, constructing this line will actually create a situation of overcapacity for the area, or overcapacity of infrastructure for the area. Thankfully, the Attorney General's Office asked the same question, and they've commissioned a study to be done that looks at just that. And that's due out October 31st of this year. The Attorney General's Office has asked FERC to take that report into consideration, which they obliged. You may be thinking to yourself, and we go through this in December with the low-demand study, and we did. That report did say that the area would be, there would be a demand for gas infrastructure up to, I think, .9 billion cubic feet per day. This proposal is for 2.2, and I think they actually, this last submission, they dialed that down to 1 point, over 1 billion cubic feet per day. The criticism on that report has been whether or not they overestimated the gas, the demand for gas, for gas-fired electric generators for the area. If you take that out of the equation in the low-demand study, you actually have pretty close to balance or enough infrastructure existing for the area. It's just adding that in, and it kind of goes through the roof, so to speak. So needless to say, the Attorney General's report, she's asked that that be evaluated as well as part of the, part of the study. For the, takes me into kind of the future now, looking out at the next month or so. If Kinder Morgan stays on track to their schedule, they'll be looking to file their formal application with FERC next month. There's no time period, so there's no, like, deadline that FERC has to respond to that. It's open-ended, but I'm told usually it takes about a year for FERC to issue what's called a draft environmental impact statement. And all that is, it's similar to, I guess, our MEPA process, where they'll issue a statement that gives conditions to Kinder Morgan that Kinder Morgan has to address. And it also opens up a public comment period, where they'll have scoping sessions, again, similar to the pre-filing stage. They'll have scoping sessions, they'll accept public comment for, they say 45 days, but knowing the attention that this project has, I would imagine they'd have to extend that. I just don't think that would be enough time to have all their scoping sessions, receive all their comments, and then Kinder Morgan would also address the conditions in the DEIS, the draft impact statement. FERC would collect all this information and then issue a final environmental impact statement. That's when FERC says the public comment period closes, and they either, I think it's 30 days, they either deny or approve the project. There's one process that I think the board should be made aware of, it's called becoming an intervenor. And what that process is, is it's a motion you file to FERC, and it gives you the, it gives a stakeholder the ability to file a brief in court and appeal a FERC decision. If you do not make a motion with FERC to become an intervenor, you lose that ability. And the reason why I bring it up is because you only have 21 days to file this motion after FERC formally submits their application, which is going to be next month. It could be tomorrow, but they're projecting it to be next month. The downside, it's not really a downside, but the one thing you should be made aware of is if you become an intervenor, you have to copy all other intervenors on correspondence to FERC thereafter. And that could be 10, it could be 700, it could be 7,000. It's tough to really estimate at this point how many interveners. Not that that should deter you, but it's something just to remain aware of. And if the town did become an intervenor, we would be copied on all other correspondence too, from anyone else that became an intervenor. Now, not becoming an intervenor doesn't, you can still provide public comment on their DEIS, it doesn't, it's not weighted any different. You don't go into, like, a special pile, comment-wise, but you do, if you don't become an intervenor, you do lose that right to appeal. That's really the gist of it.
Can you just say that again?
Yes. So if you do not become an intervenor.
You lose your right to appeal?
You lose your right to appeal a FERC decision in court. You can still make public comment throughout the whole process, and it's not weighted any differently by FERC. Kind of gauging the temperature of the coalition, there's a lot of communities that have been going to those meetings. It seems like most towns are having this same discussion. I think Pepperell passed a resolution, and I think, I tried to get their meeting minutes, and it was on an agenda item, and I assume the coalition would have made mention that if it got, if it got voted down. And I think Rotten, I was told, are not, voted not to become an intervenor.
I think, just to point out with regard to this intervenor issue, that the intervenor status affords certain legal opportunities that simply being an affected community does not. The question, I think, the town, the board need to consider are the resources from a council standpoint that will perhaps be needed in this case. I think, and this is something we'll be talking about, and I'll be looking to make a recommendation to the board at the meeting on the 13th of October, but it's most likely if the town is to become an intervenor that we would be calling upon legal counsel to assist in any kind of filings or procedures that this may afford us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I know that I've been anxious to hear about this intervenor process, notwithstanding, obviously, want to hear about everything that you've shared with us tonight. And Jeff, I'm looking forward to your recommendations on that. I guess, at this point, I'll open up for questions to the board, and if it's okay, I'll start to my right here, Mr. Newhouse.
Yes, thanks for the update, Paul. I have a comment that leads into a question. The comment is that you had mentioned the two concerns that continue to, that you continue to raise, and the town continues to raise through you, is the proximity of the relocated line to the active Benevento quarry, and then the fact that it goes through a Zone 2 groundwater protection district. My comment is that the, with reference to the proximity to an active quarry, literally, you know, the first time that they even talked to representatives from Benevento, I'm going to guess, was the summer of '14, it goes by fast, but I want to say it was the summer of '14, and they told us at that time, oh, don't worry about it, you know, this one, I think, in Connecticut. And I think it's telling that in over a year, you know, the same representation continues to be made, but no data is put in front of you. So I think that speaks to what we probably should expect on that front. The question I have is, you had indicated that the town has provided comments to FERC, and obviously, we're made aware of that through the manager, and that we've asked for an evaluation. My question is, and you also, I think, pointed out that if that request is honored, it probably won't be until after the formal filing is made. But an evaluation as to what? That's my question. As to the proximity to the quarry, as to the Zone 2, to both? Who would be responsible for the evaluation? What do you mean by that?
I would expect Kinder Morgan to be responsible for the evaluation. And what I would expect is a look at how deep the pipe section is, like, the trench is for the line, what they are expecting to encounter as far as subsurface conditions. They expect, it's an exoquarry, so, okay, we're going to expect ledge, right? Is that expected in that, is there overburden there that they're going to be encountering or that they expect? Is there, I want to somehow have some record of how they quantify what impact that might have then to the watershed area, and what a corridor, a 50-foot-wide corridor will do to the aquifer for these two wells. That's part of it. And the other half of it, I'd want to see what the pipe section is and what safety measures that they're going to implement as far as, like, is it going to be encased in concrete? Is it going to have shut offs on either end of the quarry? How far will those be? Will they be able to shut those off remotely, or is it manual? And also, the case studies, I'd like to know on those two quarries that they mentioned, are they active rock quarries? Are they just, how old are the pipes? What size are the pipes? And then, how deep are they? So then, I can take both of them side by side and look at them and say, okay, well, these have been in the ground since 1950, they have similar blast frequencies at those quarries as they do to Benevento's, and now we can make a comparison and say, this held up to the test of time for 50, 60 years. Okay, let's see what they're proposing here. That's what I'd be expecting.
Yeah, and I guess, I appreciate that feedback. I guess I would just say that, you know, it sounds to me as though you're thinking well in advance of that, and, you know, as one member of this board, I think that we ought to deal with the facts as they're presented to us and not prejudge them, but I think a healthy amount of skepticism in terms of that whole situation is warranted. So, yeah, just keep doing what we're doing, and I'm sure we'll have a recommendation from the town manager later in the middle of October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what he said, keep doing what we're doing, staying on top of it. I appreciate the good work that you're doing that, because it's obviously an extremely important issue. One question I have is, why did they come back with a different route? Was that something that we had fought for, say, hey, you got to stay away from our well fields?
We certainly made them aware of those, of our concern within the Zone 1 protective radius for the wells, as servants of the vernal pools, and then crossing through Article 97 property. And then they came back with this.
Clearly, the first iteration of their route was, I would say, even more risky from the town's perspective, the fact that they were literally within a matter of feet from the Browns Crossing well, the Salem Street well, you know, the other vernal pools and so on. That was just, you know, not completely unacceptable, and we made them aware of that. And I think their intent was to try to follow along the utility corridor to the greatest extent that they could. You know, unfortunately, as it turns out, that utility corridor is in close proximity to the quarry.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard my colleagues speak, and I totally agree with my colleagues, and I guess we're all have the same feeling of residents in the community. That's why we're depending on your professionalism, because you're an engineer, I'm not. So obviously, I'm going to take your advice pertaining to this. But, you know, being out there, you hear from a lot of folks, and it's upsetting what's going on. So, you know, I'd just like to leave it at that, and appreciate everything you're doing, and put us on the right path. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
Thank you. I think, first, I just want to thank you, Paul, for being here, as always, doing a thorough job and being at all the meetings. I know that you and other members of town personnel have invested a lot of time in looking at this, and as members of the board and as a resident of the town, I appreciate it. You know, overall, I think it's clear that there's some major concerns here, and there's some major work to be done. It's disheartening with the intervenor point, that you have to kind of do their work for them and copy everybody, so it almost feels like they're bottlenecking it with red tape. It's almost, you know, disincent anybody to get on board with that because of the labor costs that are involved in it. But I think, you know, my viewpoint from a board member perspective is that we continue doing what we're doing and availing ourselves to every opportunity throughout the process, you know, to represent the residents of the town, and what, you know, obviously, I would defer to you and the town manager and our legal team as to what the best recommendations are, but, you know, my mindset is not favorable towards this, and I haven't really seen a tremendous upside for the community, and that it really has a value-added impact to our residents other than potentially being detrimental. And I haven't heard anything, you know, overwhelmingly convincing that would make me want to really get on board with this project at all. So, I don't mean to sound pessimistic or negative, but there's nothing that I've heard from any proposal at this point that has me, you know, feeling that this is going to be a good thing for the town. So I just want to publicly make that statement while at the same time saying thank you and expressing my gratitude for your efforts to stay on top of this.
Just as a point of information, we will be meeting with representatives from Kinder Morgan this week to, and they had actually called for the meeting, so, you know, we'll continue to express our concerns. It's not clear to me what they will be bringing forward when we meet with them, but we will certainly report back.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, we had some conversation, the town manager and I had some conversation about that, and the fact is, there is a meeting scheduled with Kinder Morgan, and that is probably the primary reason why we don't have a recommendation to pursue this intervenor status now. I think we thought it would be prudent to sit through and engage in this meeting. I suspect, irregardless of what comes out of this discussion with them, that Jeff's going to come back to us with a recommendation to pursue the intervenor. And I know that, right now, where I stand, I'd support the notion, in spite of the fact that it may represent some additional costs and some manpower, but I think it's going to give us a voice, or a louder voice, in our own defense, for lack of a better word, when the time comes. Paul, I want to echo what my colleagues have said, and thank you for the hard work you're doing. We depend on you pretty heavily here. You're the guy that gets this stuff, I think probably better than most of us, certainly better than I do. So I depend on you personally to interpret some of this data and bring it down to language that I can understand. I guess I'll just offer my 10,000-foot view of this. When Route 93 came through this region, it dramatically changed the complexion of the region. And I wasn't here, but my understanding is that it interrupted some people's properties, and probably had some interruptions into the ecology of the area as well. So there was a fair amount of pain and maybe some risks that was involved in that humongous project, but the rewards were obviously great to the overall economy, both for Wilmington as well as the region. We all know that we have four exits off of 93, and that has afforded us the opportunity to have great industry and certainly helps us on a tax basis standpoint. So, there was a lot of rewards from that project. I see this as all risk and no reward so far. I am not convinced, I haven't heard anybody tell me, that the presence of this pipeline or this lateral on the pipeline project will have any immediate at all, or even long-term benefit, or ancillary benefit to the residents of Wilmington. So it's real hard for me to get on board with this project and to think of it as anything but negative. So unless someone is able to show me convincingly with data that we, the residents within this community, are somehow going to benefit from it, they're not going to find me as an advocate for the project. But, again, that's just my sort of position on this. Again, Paul, thank you for the update, and I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to expand on that anymore, or are we?
No, I think that should cover it.
Very well. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As Paul wraps up, I will turn it over to the town manager to engage in the communications
First on the agenda, we have a letter from Dennis Otis. He is seeking to be a constable, and we've provided him with the information, with direction in terms of what information he has to provide back to my office for consideration. So that is in the works. Correspondence from the Department of Housing and Community Development. You may recall, a few meetings ago, the board was asked to sign an amendment to the regulatory agreement with Whispering Pines that changed the percentage of affordable units from 30% to 25%. This is on the Phase 2 portion of the project, this, the section that has remained dormant for some period of time. This correspondence is just relaying that the agreement has been signed off on and should We have a correspondence from RMLD just announcing their Public Power Week program on Thursday, October 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at their address on 230 Ash Street, Reading. They're going to be providing programs for various age groups. LED bulbs and holiday lights are available at their online store. They reference electric cars from area dealers, charging station samples, and various other activities on that date.
We have a couple of board to consider items, with the first one is to sign the earth-removal permit that was presented to us at our last Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Yes, this earth-removal permit contains all the conditions that were read into the record at the prior Board of Selectmen's meeting. So I would be just looking for a vote of the board to authorize the issuance of this permit.
Is there a motion from the members?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion on this? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Just two signatures.
That's coming around for signatures.
We have a request for a block party, just a request came in from Shawna Gifford, reads, "I am writing to request permission for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, October 31st, beginning at 12:00 p.m. on Ring Ave. Residents from Bigger Ave, Gertie Street, and Pilcher Drive will be in participation. The neighbors have asked that I request road closures through the evening, as we typically get many drop-off trick-or-treaters, and would like to keep it a private event. However, we can enforce and end time if needed."
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, I never met Shawna Gifford until 6:00 tonight. She came in, she thought the meeting was at 6:00, and I said, we were meeting an executive session. I said, you're probably going to be on the agenda about 7:20. She said to me at that time that she had, like, three young kids, and I said, don't worry about it, go home, take your kids, and get them to school, and I don't see a problem with the Board of Selectmen voting it. Unfortunately, it's now 8:00, so I'm really glad I didn't. Unfortunately, it's now 8:00, so I'm really glad I didn't tell her to stay. So, I just thought I'd pass that on to you. She seemed like a wonderful person and I just thought I'd pass that on to say I would talk to the board on your behalf, and I did.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Do you have recommendations, Jeff? Excuse me.
I know I had spoken with the chief, police chief, on this and the recommendation is to not have road closures on Bigger and, let's see, Bigger and?
Ring.
Ring, but to provide for a road closure on Gertie. Gertie intersects Pilcher and Bigger and, given the need for emergency response vehicles, I think it was his suggestion that those particular roads not be closed. Also, there was no specific reference to a end date for this, an end time, but the recommendation would be that it be no later than 10:00 p.m.
So, those recommendations from public safety, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request for a neighborhood block party subject to any limitations or restrictions imposed by the police department.
And if I'd like to second that and if we can have the manager, if you could reach out to Shawna Gifford and explain to her that we want to work with her and I understand the truth. Thank you.
So great, we have a motion made and seconded by Mr. McCoy. Is there further discussion on that? Then is all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Happy Halloween to them. The next bullet reads, "The board to consider executing the agreement between the town of Wilmington and town manager Jeffrey Hall. In our executive session leading into today and to the Board of Selectments meeting this evening, we came to what I would characterize as a substantive agreement with town manager Jeff Hall. As a result, the language of the contract that we would like to execute would need to be refined and put into a formal document that we could then vote on and execute at our next Board of Selectment meeting. Because that next Board of Selectment meeting will be in October and a couple of weeks after Mr. Hall's current contract's expiration, I would ask for and accept a motion to the effect of the following. The board should vote to reappoint Jeff Hall for a term of up to one month pending completion of the negotiation of a new contract and with all of the terms and conditions of the existing contract remaining in effect during this one-month reappointment. So, effectively, on the date that we execute the new contract or the new agreement, it would negate this vote. So, this just gives us, affords us the opportunity to go through the next executive, I'm sorry, the next Board of Selectment meeting, which I believe would be scheduled for October 13th, the day after Columbus Day. I ask for the month just for prudence and I think in case there's any reason that we don't have a quorum or some other wrinkle in the gears that happens between now and the end of the month. So, is there a motion to that effect or shall I read it again for everyone's approval?
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Newhouse.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McCoy. All in favor? It's unanimous with Lou's not participating in that vote. Thank you all for that. We will go to public comments now. Are there any? Yes?
George, looking from 11 Crawford Street. I don't know, the Board of Selectment members are aware, I'm currently suing the town on a zoning board of appeals issue. I just wanted to make a public comment that I think the zoning board of appeals is a seriously flawed and broken board and the process involved with that is seriously flawed and broken. That essentially resulted, on June 10th, there was a hearing as a result of a lot, my years of complaining about issues with my neighbors and commercial use and a lot of other things, that apparently the building inspector finally decided to enforce some of the applicable bylaws which were appealed. And I had no knowledge that anything was going on and I finally got a notice that the meeting was gonna happen and I made a request for public information to get copies of the appropriate documents and it wasn't provided with them. And showed up at a hearing where Mr. Loud gave a speech on how appalled he was that I was there in the first place and continually wanted to have me ejected from the meeting by the police because I objected to being railroaded several times. And I think the two attorneys on the board, Mr. Boyle and Mr. Vermon acted unethically and we're gonna ultimately resolve this in court. But I think the board, because you appoint the board, the zoning board of appeals members should be aware that I characterize that June 10th hearing as an absolute kangaroo hearing and I would be, I think you should seriously look at what the results of the court findings are gonna be ultimately on that and you should seriously think about replacing those three people, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Any other public comments?
If I would, I'm not going to engage in any back and forth on the substance. I just want to point out that when we sit here and don't engage in debate and don't object to those kinds of accusations, we don't, that isn't some kind of tacit agreement. We just don't care to speak to it. That's my view.
I appreciate you raising that, Mr. Newhouse.
I agree.
I think we all share that observation. New Business Committee reports. I will go down to Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you. I just, you know, happened to be the first person speaking, so I certainly know that I share many of the thoughts that I'm sure I will hear from all of you when you have your opportunity to speak regarding the playground dedication that just took place on Saturday, September 26th for MIT Officer Sean Collier. It was just such a moving event to be a part of and Where Angels Play, Bill Lavine, his whole group, the town personnel across the board, DPW, public safety, fire police, Jerry Lawrence, and specifically from DPW and the many volunteers. I certainly am sure I'm missing someone, but it just was a complete nationwide effort. There were people that came far and wide to support that project and the town of Wilmington completely embraced the family and the endeavor. You know, I was thrilled to be there under such unfortunate circumstances, but it just was such a meaningful event to see his family be able to see a playground unveiled that represented life and something that represented Sean in terms of his patriotism, his love of the flag, his love of the United States, his love of children. And in speaking with his mother the night before at the fundraiser and speaking with the chief of MIT and a local Wilmington resident, Mr. DeFavor, they said that, you know, there's been so many things that have been done for the family and they appreciated anything and everything and it's just been overwhelming for them. But they both made it a point individually to say how much it meant to have something in Wilmington. And I was able to be a small part of it only because I happened to be the chair at the time, but I wanted to commend Selectmen Lucy Maglia for bringing this to my attention as the chair at the time and helping me work with Jeff and thank you, Jeff, and Kendra and everyone else for working to bring this to fruition with the board and the board overall supporting it. And obviously, we know we've had the family in here and they endorse the project. And I think we, as a board with the manager, stood united that we, in some way, shape or form, wanted to support this project unanimously to try and do something for the family. So, obviously, this is the work of Where Angels Play and I certainly take no credit at all, but it just, there are no words to fully describe the feeling that day and just the emotion, the raw emotion that was there. But it was very celebratory, it was very uplifting and it was very moving and I just wanted to say that it was a proud day to be part of Wilmington under the most unfortunate, tragic circumstances, but I was very proud to be from this town at that very moment. So, I'll leave it at that.
Well said. Thank you, Judy. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Judy said it all and it was a moving moment to be there on Saturday and that's all I'm really gonna say and I think Judy said it all. I'd just like to make a quick comment on something. Now that I have a little free time, I never had really Fridays or Saturday nights off, so I went to a Red Sox game Friday night, fantastic game, seven to zero, and saw that play of the week and everything. I couldn't name all the players, but I know who Big Poppy is, other than that. But what I saw something interesting going to the game and coming home from the game and it kind of touched me a little bit is a lot of panhandling going down there, unfortunate. A lot of things in the city, and I understand him as, you know, a liberal mayor and as a liberal city council, and I'm sure there's a legitimate, good cause of people being there. But then again, there are a lot of folks that are there just probably taking advantage. And I believe that some veterans are really deserving of many things and I saw a lot of that. And I know, you know, we don't, can pick up a newspaper, we can see that people go out panhandle basically begging for money and some of those folks, it's really worth for folks that they really need to do things and other folks probably using it for drugs. And it brought me back into the summertime, outside Market Basket, when we'd see those individuals out there panhandling, basically asking for money, come up with their sign. And I know over a year ago, we gave the police department the teeth they needed to really take care of the Silver Lake situation because a lot of outsiders were coming in doing horrible things at that lake and it wasn't really the residents. And the Board of Selectment did a great job and by giving the police, we went to believe, to town meeting. I'm just bringing this out to the board that either at our next special town meeting or at our next town meeting, maybe town council could give us some information in how we would come up with a town ordinance to eliminate the panhandling because I think it was disgusting to see at the end of CVS, day in and day out, individuals there, you know? And I had no choice, I didn't want to follow anybody, but I could see it. It just bothered me to see that out there. And I don't believe that was legitimate and I, from what I understand, I've read stories in the town crowd, I've heard from members of law enforcement, basically, and I believe it was Mr. Palmer or one of those officers basically saying that, you know, a lot of those panhandlers are using that opportunity to make money for drugs. So, being this the town of Wilmington, I know we care about our community and I think we need to give the police department teeth in actually going after these individuals when they're out there at the plazas, no matter what street corner they're at. I just bring that up to the board and hopefully that we can go in a positive direction because we did, this boy did an outstanding task at Silver Lake.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Yeah, it's, there's a lot of meat on that bone to discuss potentially and maybe in the future, we can take that up as a bullet item. I'm gonna go in order, if that's okay. I want to compliment Judy for articulating so very well the tenor and the overall celebratory feeling of Saturday. And it's hard to think that it was a celebration, given the nature of how Sean was taken from this world, but nevertheless, it will be a celebration at that site for hopefully decades and maybe even generations. One of the best parts of that whole day, and at least as far as I'm concerned, was the moment that the yellow ribbon was cut and, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 little kids ran up into that playground. They don't know who Sean Collier is. All they cared about was going there and having fun and having a great time and you could hear the shrieks of delight as they ran and played on that facility. And from what I've learned and spoken to the family and what I understand about Mr. Collier is that nothing would have made him happier than that. So, I think it's a true legacy and a true testament to him and I'm very, very proud that Wilmington has that in our borders. I wanted to call out a couple, and there's always a risk of doing this, because in so doing, I'm afraid I'm gonna leave someone off, but I certainly wanted to publicly acknowledge and pay gratitude to the Wilmington Kiwanis, to the Wilmington Sons of Italy, who I believe were very generous, to certainly the police department and the NMLAC group that came through with a very nice contribution on Friday evening, certainly the fire department who were there to support the effort all the way along, all the town employees, Judy, that you mentioned. And I missed one here along the way here. Oh, yeah, Mike Kachuk, a local contractor who stepped up and made, I think, a dumpster available on a moment's notice and made it go away in a moment's notice. So, these are the kind of things, it was a true team effort, a true community effort, and it was a beautiful thing to see. So, that is that. I also wanted to briefly pay tribute to an individual who, for years, maybe even decades, has spent time working for the betterment of our community through the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee and wanted to acknowledge and give our thoughts and prayers to the family of Ms. Judy Waterhouse, who passed recently. So, if, as you go about your daily business, if you just pause for a moment and think of her and her family and pray for them as well. Mr. Maglia.
Yeah, I think, well, you stole my thunder with the ribbon cutting. That was a special moment when Bill Lavine from Angels Play cut the ribbon and all the little children just took over the playground. It was very touching. And thanking everybody, I'd like to publicly thank the McClellan family for in town here. They donated the three bike racks that you see out on the outside of the fence of the playground and it was a very touching day. And Judy, you put it so eloquently how it was and how it went down. So, once again, you know, we stand up here as your representatives, but we can honestly say that, and I can honestly say that, I'm so proud to live in Wilmington and to see the community come together so many times and time and time again, whether it's volunteerism on a beautiful project like this or whatever it takes. Publicly, I'd like to thank the police chief who's here tonight and his department for showing up and the beautiful flag, the huge flag that was donated by Nichols Funeral Home. Margaret McKenna and her family graciously donated that last Veterans Day and it looked pretty special over the beach on Saturday. So, Wilmington's just doing what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newhouse?
I guess the only thing that I would add is that I think it's not only appropriate from what we all have gathered from how Officer Collier lived his life, how pleased he would be with the specific location and the playground and the connection with the kids and how much he would have appreciated and enjoyed that. I think what's helpful for us, though, is always to have a reminder of what he sacrificed. So, we all get busy in our lives and I think frankly, we all just have a tendency to forget.
Appreciate you there, that very cogent comments. Thank you, sir. Jeff, if, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, please. Let me just interrupt. I just need to say, when I went to the Red Sox game, I brought my wonderful wife with me and I gotta tell you, I think the town manager would have a tough time fitting in those seats. I'll tell you, you know? So, just bring that up. Thanks.
Thanks for that observation, Mr. McCoy. Jeff, you?
Yes, just a couple of items under new business. Received a request from the community fund to make an announcement about a program they're running. They're announcing that they're sponsoring a carbon monoxide detector giveaway, which will take place on November 7th. The process is that individuals will, can complete a form that is available in various locations throughout town, I believe, including the town hall. They can also go on their website, which is www.comfund.org. The form has to be submitted by October 15th, limit one detector per household, and then there will be a pickup of the detectors between the hours of 9:30 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. on Saturday the 7th. Pickup will be at the Fourth of July Building. Please be sure to bring proof of residency and a photo ID. So, this is just for Wilmington residents.
Did they send that to you in the form of an email or is that a printed copy that they handed to you?
This was just brought in today.
Okay.
So, we have them on our counter. I believe they're also at the library, perhaps another venue, but certainly the town hall. The other item I just wanted to note along the lines of the Where Angels Play, again, just to echo the comments, but certainly want to extend a sincere thanks to Bill Lavine and his Army of Angels for all the work that they did in constructing the playground. Also wanted to note that the donations may still be made to the Where Angels Play Foundation. Their website is whereangelsplay.org or the alternative, donors can send checks made out to Where Angels Play Foundation, care of Roberta Boyle, 115 Westview Road, Lowell, Mass. 01852.
If I may just add to that, too, is that I think it's been said in previous meetings, but the way they work, and I know that Jeff has said this before, is it's a pay it forward. So, whatever monies that they fundraised while they were here in Wilmington and then whatever they get for contributions, they use towards their next project. And Bill made it very clear that they intend to be building more in Boston and they're specifically trying to get
specifically trying to get funds together to build playgrounds in, in memorial, to memorialize the Boston Marathon victims, so Little Martin Richard, and things like that. So I just want to keep it close to home, too, that, you know, obviously you want to give to a charity, it probably doesn't really matter where it goes, but they're specifically trying to do additional playgrounds in Boston, so the funds that are coming in now will help them decide what they're in fact able to do. So I just wanted to put that out there to the community, that there's more work to be done in Massachusetts.
Thank you. I'm glad you both took the time to add that. I had neglected to consider that, and it was certainly worthwhile, so appreciate it. Jeff, I think we're on important dates.
The Sundays through October 11th, Farmer's Market, Town Common, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. October 4th is the next Harndon Tavern Open House, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. October 7th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. October 8th, Redding Municipal Light, Open House, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. October 10th is the Fire Department Open House, Public Safety Building, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. October 10th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. October 12th is the, the town offices will be closed for the Columbus Day holiday. The next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is October 13th, here in Room 9, 7:00 p.m. October 14th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then again, on October 17th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. October 23rd is the Cairo Lecture Fund Series Sounds Like Frank, Wilmington Middle School, that'll be held at 7:00 p.m. October 25th is the Horables Parade, Rotary Park, 4:30 p.m. And then October 28th is a, a program dealing with substance abuse, navigating the troubled waters of substance abuse, will be held at St. Thomas of Villanova, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jeff. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy, because discussions of this subject in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's position in the matter. Upon completion of the executive session, the board will adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, and it is seconded. All in favor by voice vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I would be abstaining from that.
Yes.
Four yeses, and Mr. McCoy abstained. Thank you all, and good evening.